Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the February 10th Board of Education meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here, thank you. Alright, so the first item on the agenda is written communication. Dr. Babes, do we have any written communication?
We have no written communication this evening.
Okay, great. Alright, the next item is comments from the public. Do we have comments from the public?
We have no comments from the public this evening.
Okay. Alright, moving along, we're at items for information. So the first item is Student Leadership Academy.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. We're gonna ask Teresa Collins and Dr. Kimona Brown, Kimona, are you coming too? Alright, y'all come on up. To share a little bit about our Student Leadership Academy. Ms. Collins is not new to ETHS, has been returning to ETHS, and currently serves as our Director of Academic Supports. But let me just say this. What you're gonna hear in Items A and B tonight are new systems, new structures, and new approaches to serving our students in a more systemic and thoughtful way. And I'm very excited to, and hopefully you will see the parallels and the structures and the things that Ms. Collins and Dr. Rose will share tonight. So I'm gonna turn this over to Teresa and Dr. Brown and they'll share a little bit about what we've been up to the last 12 months.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we just wanted to start our presentation with a little quote from Dr. Goldie Muhammad, who will also be here on the 28th. So if you're free, come on by. I kinda fangirl over Dr. Muhammad. "But not every educator will deserve the privilege of teaching the next generation of leaders, but it is with hope that we prepare ourselves to do so." So for this presentation, we're gonna specifically look at, or for the, not just the presentation, but for ELEAD, we're specifically focusing on District 01, Equitable and Excellent Education, and our strategic priorities of post-high school planning and equity. So, we did a lot of work just to think about what we wanted ELEAD to look like, especially after our guidance from Dr. Campbell for what his vision of this program would be. And it took quite a lengthy time for us to come up with the mission because we wanted our mission to capture exactly what we wanted the program to kinda look like. But also, we wanted the mission to be something that really stood on the grounds of what we stand for at ETHS. And so after, again, a lot of cutting and editing, we came up with our mission is to cultivate a student leadership program that empowers high school students to develop their unique leadership identities. By fostering self-awareness, purpose, and resilience, we guide students in discovering their potential as impactful leaders who inspire positive change within their communities. And that was our final draft. We felt really good about that.
That's good.
Okay. Another important piece of the vision that Dr. Campbell kind of presented the initial planning group with is the notion of making sure that we're providing students with an experience where they're learning from the inside out and the outside in. And so our hope over the course of the four years that students will be engaged in the program is to really anchor it on three things. We want to expose the students to new ideas, people, and places. We want to engage them in experiences that help them become who they are as an individual leader of self and of others. And we want to provide them with experience to do that. So you'll see in the presentation, over the course of the four-year arc of experience, we do intend to hit the three Es, as it were. So there's a lot of context and history that Dr. Brown will talk about.
And I'll be quick, but we started planning in the 23, 24th school year. And so we developed a committee, and in the committee, we tried to look at every area that we felt would be necessary in order to build this program. So we had a dean, we had student services, we had our equity team, we had our Avid personnel, we had people from different departments. We just really wanted to make sure that we covered every area as we thought about and kinda conceptualized what this program would look like. And so, we started the team, we looked at what we really wanted to accomplish from our planning, what we wanted the program to build out to be. And so we did a lot of research, we looked at different schools, different programs that were similar to what we were trying to do. We didn't see a program that looked exactly like ours and what we wanted to accomplish, but we looked at different ones just to kinda get a general idea of where we wanted to go with our program. We connected with Dr. David Jaeger in Texas, and we went down to Texas to look at his FUSE program and to take some ideas from them, which were really, really helpful for us to do in order to kinda start building this program. Collaborated with different personnel down in Texas, as well as in other areas, just to really decide what it is, what was important for this program, and what we really wanted to accomplish when we started to build the program. And then in August, we hired the wonderful, rehired the wonderful Ms. Teresa Collins, who came in, I mean, on fire and just really helped us to start to really conceptualize the program. And so I'll let her talk about the work that she's done since she's been here in August.
That's very kind, yes. So you'll notice in the timeline, there are two places that say have a firm plan by fall. So I was very pleased to be hired in July and to start work in August with the mighty team that really Dr. Campbell and Dr. Brown put together. So my work really started to take shape in late August, early September, and I wanted to try to go beyond the brainstorm. So you'll see in the presentation, I got a lot of really wonderful material, and so my job was to really winnow it down and focus and synthesize all the fantastic ideas. So over the course of the fall, we did everything from move beyond the brainstorm, we established some areas of focus, we started our curriculum development as well as reaching out to middle schools to let them know about this emerging opportunity. Also started reaching out to and speaking with community partners. We visited a fantastic public school in Philadelphia called Science Leadership Academy, and their entire structure is built on engaging and developing student leadership, and they have a very robust work-based education program. And then by the time we got to December, we had our first Family Information Night. We launched our soft, we had our soft launch of the application process, and we got underway with admissions upon the new year. So as we came back from the break, we had about 20 completed applications. And this kind of brings us to the present moment. So, as I said, there were pages and pages and pages and pages of a Google Doc that had lots of fantastic ideas, but I focused it down to what we call the founding five. So we needed to think about students and what our admissions process would look like. We wanted to figure out what family engagement would look like. How are we gonna build our curriculum and design an experience for this cohort of students and for the cohort of faculty? What connections can we make in the wider Evanston ecosystem to create opportunities for our students? And then, of course, one of the pillars of our work here at ETHS, what experiences will we provide for the students to explore, plan, and prepare for life after ETHS? And how are we gonna ensure that they do that? And I think we've got a really excellent start. So, we will be learning together. ELEAD is a four-year cohort-based program that's designed to guide students in leadership identity development. You see, I'm an English teacher by training, so there's a lot of alliteration. I hope you enjoy. But what is ELEAD? It is a program that we're designing per Dr. Campbell's vision to create a community within a community for our rising ninth-grade students. We're targeting students in the academic middle who don't typically connect with all that we have to offer. We want to support our students' identity development through the lens of leadership and through the rich and robust offerings that we have in our Evanston-Skokie community. Through the content of a course that you all approved this winter, we're gonna be developing leadership awareness, understanding, potential, and then through our advisory action. And I wanted to point out, we have just finished our first round of interviews, and so I took the liberty of pulling a few quotes from the students that we've spoken with. And the first one is right here. You know, one of our applicants said, when asked to describe a community and what leading means, said, "Every person does their own part to make the community better." And we want to make sure that the students that we're targeting and that we're really hoping to engage in this program absolutely feels that sense of belonging and mattering through doing their part. Part of our mission is to ensure that we support and encourage our students to confidently connect. Another one of our applicants said the other day, "There's so many opportunities at high school, how am I supposed to make sense of it all?" That's why we're here. We want to put arms around the students who maybe feel overwhelmed, maybe feel a little bit scared, to help them really connect with what we have here. And again, through that exposure, engagement, and experience to connect them within and beyond the world of our amazing Evanston-Skokie community. So our students, as I said, we're targeting students in the academic middle, so we're primarily using the MAP range that you see here. We're asking students to consider their grades when they choose to apply, as well as attendance. Now, numbers and grades do not make an entire student. The other piece that we're really looking for is potential. We're looking for students who have just a little bit of moxie, a little bit of chutzpah, to say like, "I'm interested, I meet the criteria." And anyone who meets the criteria is eligible to interview. So we're looking for that potential, and we're getting that in terms of the recommendations from our middle school colleagues and partners and the folks who are recommending students. We're also kind of aiming for students who would really benefit from greater access to people and programs, particularly in the area of career pathways. Some people have great networks that they're born into, and others need to find them another way. So we're hoping to provide that opportunity. And then, we're asking and looking for students who might just need that little extra bit of encouragement and support for students who will shine because of the small team of ELEAD faculty who will be guiding and mentoring them. Our program is gonna include an academic community and cohorted classes. Our students will travel together, I'll show you that in just a moment. LEAD Visory, which is the course that you approved earlier this winter. It's gonna include field-based experiential learning, off-campus retreats, and travel opportunities. Again, connections with our partners in Evanston-Skokie. And I guess this is really more of an outcome, but we hope for greater engagement in connection with school. And then we will absolutely be providing students with multiple opportunities to reflect on their experience while they're here and as they plan for their life after high school. So this is a little bit about the academic experience, and I know it was in your report, but what I love about it is that there is a way in which the students have time together as a cohort and choice. And that's something that Dr. Campbell really wanted to highlight for the students. So we want them to build an academic experience together. And I'll just focus on the ninth-grade year. The students will travel together in their humanities class, that's required for everyone. They will still have the opportunity for Pathway for Honors. They will also be co-horted together in their PE wellness class, and there's a wonderful leadership trajectory that they could potentially take advantage of in that coursework. And then, the anchor of the experience is what we're calling the LEAD Visory Seminar. See what we did there? Okay. So in the first year, the course is called Introduction to Identity and Leadership. So we will have content in identity development through the lens of leadership, and we've got some great resources to take a look at over the summer when we do our curriculum development work. And this stands as the FASH for students their freshman year. So we will keep some of the FASH and SASH curriculum so that students have that equity of experience, they're learning how to use school links, they're learning how to connect with their counselors, but they're also doing things that help grow their leadership, like learning how to write those emails to adults in the building without just saying like, "Hey", and so on and so forth. So I won't belabor the rest of the academic experience. If you have questions about that, we can certainly talk. But what I love about the advisory is that advisors will loop with students for four years. So the LEAD Visory is the core where discovery really happens. The coursework is Introduction to Leadership and Identity, and we will embed the other pieces in the advisory component of this program. And because Dr. Brown is all things master schedule, we plan to seat the advisory at the end of the day so that when it comes time to take students off-campus, we've got a little bit of extra time and space to do that. Another really exciting component is that we will be taking the students on retreats and learning treks. Part of this is due to the fact that we're generously funded by a philanthropist in the city, and so that donor wants to make sure that we're offering experiences for students as a group and potentially separately as they individuate and find pathways that they want to take as they create their plans. So in very exciting news, we've contracted with Camp Echo, and we'll be taking the ninth graders on their first retreat to build community, have some challenging experiences, and as they say at Camp Echo, and also have some fun. So we'll have the students up there to really start their journey with ELEAD in a fantastic place with one of our best Evanston partners. And because we believe in student voice and centering students, 10th grade is to be designed, and we're planning on asking them to help us think about what their summer experience for 10th grade might look like. In 11th and 12th grade, we would like to take the students off-campus on learning treks. So 11th grade, we're envisioning a trip to Alabama, Salma, Montgomery, and Birmingham to do a history trek that's connected to their work in U.S. history. And then 12th grade is going to be about leave-taking and celebrating and preparing for the capstone experience, whatever that might look like for the students. Really influenced by work-based learning and the frameworks and possibilities and connections that Duana Fraser has. So you'll see here in the continuum, you know, we go from awareness and exposure into experience and action. And again, because we're hoping that the students will make their own decisions based in the learning that we're providing them with, some of our students may indeed have internships and work-based learning experiences that they're taking advantage of junior, senior year. Others might be more embedded in the community and service. Others might be more embedded at the school and leading within the school. We're really hoping that over the course of the four years, by the time they, you know, by the time they get to be seniors where they have much more flexibility, we will see, you know, 40 different plans for 40 different students. If we, you know, maybe it'll be 75, we'll see where the numbers go. So, back to the alliteration. You know, we want the kids to look, be exposed, we want them to learn and engage, and then we want them to lead and experience. So this is part of our vision statement, which is to empower every student to become a confident, purpose-driven leader through collaboration with engaged faculty and families. By fostering resilience, empathy, and a commitment to equity, we aim to inspire positive change within our communities and contribute to a more compassionate, inclusive world. Through critical thinking and creativity, we strive to cultivate lifelong learners and socially just leaders. Couple more here, but centering the student voices. In our interview, we're asking the students, "Why ELEAD? You know, why did you decide to write a short essay, come in for an interview?" And then we're also asking what good leadership looks like. And I just, these are eighth graders. So in answering the question, "Why ELEAD?", one ELEAD applicant said, "If I'm in a group with shared goals, I work harder. I feel like I'm a leader, but ELEAD will help me become more of a leader." And I loved this one, "I'd be the first batch, and then I can talk about my experiences to future students." And then look at what they said about what good leadership is. Leadership is when people look up to you because you're good at what you do, and they say, "I want to be like her." Good leaders help others be successful, they don't take the spotlight. And check it out, good leaders don't punch down, they bring everyone together. So these are the students that we hope to invite to this experience. The current work, as I said before, we had an information night in December. Our application opened on the 16th, and it closes on the 21st. At the moment, we've got 28 applicants in the pipeline. So round 1.0 is complete, and 2.0 is gonna be ongoing in our four District 65 feeder schools, two of the parochial schools, and one independent school. We hope to make final decisions by the 28th so that we can get the word out to families, and they can make their decisions and say, "Yes, yes, yes, please," so that they can come to the Family Welcome Event on March 13th. For the faculty support side, we're pulling together the faculty team right now for both advisory and the humanities and the Echo trip. And so we're gonna gather together with Mia Henry of Freedom Lifted. She's a dear friend and a phenomenal facilitator, founder of the Freedom School in Chicago, and many, many other things. So she'll be working with the adults to create a community, to create a plan for not only our summer work, but our work as a cohort as we're working to build leadership in our students. And then our summer curriculum project will be about building out the Intro to Leadership and Identity course. And then on the 28th, Dr. Campbell, Dr. Brown, and I are going to Camp Echo with our students, right? So that's where we are. And there's a huge list of thank-yous. As I said, it was really, I'm so happy to be back at ETHS, and I'm very, very happy to be doing this work. It's been a really engaging, creative endeavor, and all the people who are listed here are folks with whom I've had short conversations, long conversations. They've given me a book, they've given me an idea, they've given me feedback. They've said, "How many FTEs do you need?", and so on and so forth. So a huge list that I won't belabor, but it is a team effort, and I am really grateful and especially thankful to Dr. Campbell for the opportunity, Dr. Brown for the launch, and I have to shout out Christina, modeling buy-in, my amazing assistant who is helping build this process from the ground up. So everybody here is special and wonderful and amazing, but those are the three that I want to highlight. So with that, I am finished talking, and I would love to take any questions.
How exciting, really. It sounds amazing. It sounds just amazing. I can't wait to hear about this as this cohort gets going and these students, you know, find a way to bring them in, into the board. We love having students in.
Okay.
So I'm sure you will.
Noted, yeah.
Very good. Alright, board questions. Liz?
Hello. So yeah, the short answer is I love it. This is, you know, just one of the many initiatives that we see come to the board that are just such a testament to how much ETHS cares for all of our students. You know, we often talk about, like, our students who aren't being served very well, and then we talk about, like, our highest-achieving students, and now we're really addressing everyone that falls in the middle. And I just, I think it's great, this whole thing looks great. And, so I guess my only question was actually, so I had some parents reach out to me, it was maybe like three or four weeks ago, who had received a flyer at their middle school for their student. And it was the first they were hearing about ELEAD. So they were asking me about it, and I just said, you know, "I'll find out more at this meeting and let you know, but now that I'm kinda seeing your timeline of applications, I'm kinda worried, like, do they still have time to apply?"
Yeah, they do, we're extending the deadline to the 21st. And just for clarification, I started outreach via email just after Thanksgiving because we had an information night. And so we pulled together from this vast workbook that we had, a mailing list, an email list of students who met the criteria in terms of MAP scores. So definitely emailed to families, and then had been in conversation and communication with all of the middle schools. So, you know, not everybody reads email all the time. And we did have, you know, the option for students to come in for an information session, and that was our next opportunity to say, like, "We're coming to interview these students who have applied, and you still have a whole cohort of kids who are eligible that we haven't heard from. They didn't come to the information night, we haven't heard from their families on email. If you can try to pull them into the conference room, we'd love to talk with them." And so that's the source of the handout that you're referring to.
Okay, so I'll just, I'll go back to those parents and just make sure they read their emails, and if they're interested to try to get their, the child has to write an essay, right?
Very short, 100 words. Yes, very short, like a paragraph.
Alright, will do, thank you.
Thanks, well, wow, this is amazing, and I'm just thrilled. When I read this, I was just so excited. And first, because this gentleman here told us a long time ago, when he was interviewing for this job, how important that pathway and that post-secondary planning would be, and this just goes beyond anything I could have imagined. So, thanks to Marcus and to both of you and all the wonderful people that helped you. I really loved, in the academic experience, how you framed leadership about community, national, and self. That was, that alone is worth, you know, the price of admission. So, thank you for that. And I guess, in addition to just being thrilled and excited and grateful and wanting to hear more as we progress, the one thing that, as I was reading the report, really struck me is that there's gonna be so much learning in this process that obviously you will apply, because I know you, and I know this is what you do. You learn, and you apply it, and you make all those tweaks along the way. But there's also learning that can go elsewhere, and I just hope there's some intentionality from your experience developing of this really terrific program that I'm confident will be successful. When you're learning, how can that get shared out in other spaces within the building and the district? Because I think others could really benefit. And that's true of other things, too, that other people could do things and help you. But just if, some intentionality, because I think you've really, you've got a very sharp, very strategic plan here. And in my experience, a good plan leads to good learning, not just for the kids, but for the adults. And so I just hope whatever you take from that, certainly you apply to your own work, but that you help others learn from, too. So, great work, thank you so much.
I have a very simple little question, and that is, I just wanted to confirm, since you're referring to LEAD Visory as an elective class, is it credit-bearing?
Yes.
Okay, and that's right, because we approved it, so it would be, but I just wanted to... And then, I'm very familiar with Avid, because I worked with Avid for years, and I very much understand how these two things are different. One thing about Avid that's similar is it looks at students in the academic middle. And so, how is it going, or how's the approach going in terms of incoming eighth graders and families kind of like, you know, distinguishing, like, who would be interested in what and how to promote these two valuable programs?
So we have done some outreach with Kealan Bonner, who is our Avid coordinator. He's gone to the school, and also with Teresa, they've gone to the schools together to kind of present their programs and to differentiate the two. Our numbers for Avid for next year haven't decreased, they actually have increased a little bit. And that may be due to the fact that there is Avid in the middle schools now, and so those kids are now becoming ninth graders.
Oh, okay.
So the numbers have increased, we haven't lost any kids there. But we also have been very clear about the difference between the two programs, even though there is some crossover between the two. So they have gone and done some outreach to speak on, like, the differences and kind of distinguish what they mean for the two different programs.
Sure. And thanks for the reminder that they're now doing Avid in the middle schools. I hadn't remembered that, thank you.
Hi. Well, first, I think this is just a really cool idea, and I really like the idea of having a curriculum designated to leadership and promoting leadership for students, because that's really amazing. And then I had kind of a similar question and another question, but if this becomes part of the student's curriculum, does this take over their elective? Because, like, I think Avid takes over students' elective, and they have their language, but they can't go outside and do other electives, just if they have a full-class load? Is that how this is gonna play out?
So for the first two years, it replaces their FASH and SASH. So they're still able to take other electives as they would if they had a FASH or SASH. For a junior year, it would take maybe their free block or some elective space, but they could still continue with some of their other elective classes if they decided to continue with those.
Okay, thank you. And then, in the end goal of this, like, how big would a cohort be? Because right now, it's 28, but like, to keep the, like, staff-to-student ratio pretty, I guess, balanced to put enough focus on each student, how big do you, like, expect it to become? Or hope it becomes?
So, we hope that it becomes big, like, you know. But there's a ton of kids in the academic middle who will definitely benefit from this program. I think right now is really new, and it's kind of scary when they see, you know, the requirements. But we feel like, our ultimate goal was to have at least 75 kids. So we still have a lot of room for growth for this current cohort, but we do believe that even though it's kind of starting a little slow, it's because there's a lot of apprehension in, like, the unknown, right? So people are a little scared of what they don't know. But we do believe that it will grow. We still have some opportunity for students to come in, and we're positive that in the... We still have some opportunity for students to come in and we're positive that in the upcoming years that it will expand greatly because once, you know, after, usually after the first year and people see that it's not, it's not anything to fear, then the numbers usually explode. So we're looking forward to that.
Yeah. I think one of the, the only thing that I would add is that I think we're striving to keep the lead advisory number at or below the typical cap for classes. So, so below 25 students in an advisory section, so that we do have that, you know. I was talking to someone the other day who's like, oh, 25 to 20, that's not a big deal. And I thought, you've never been a classroom teacher because it's a huge deal. And so to have an advisor, you know, a group of students, a group of 20 potentially, that a faculty member is with for four years, is, is exactly, I think, what we need to be after when we're talking about belonging and, and students having a sense that they matter and that they're really anchored in a community. And then I think the, you know, the impact on the humanities sections will be similar, if not the same, you know, keeping at or below the typical cap for an English and History section, for example. So I think we'll be able to manage that, especially if we, if we keep, you know, the target numbers where they are right now. I will say, Dr. Campbell originally said like, let's go for 200. And I thought, that's pretty big. But, so you know, the small steps, you know, one good thing at a time. And I think, I think we're headed in a good direction in terms of the numbers. Yeah. And to the point about learning, you know, we will learn along the way what our capacities are and what our needs are in terms of space and staffing and the student experience. So thank you for that question.
Thank you.
Yes, certainly as the numbers grow, the staff will have to grow. I really like the idea of keeping the groupings small so that you can, or the teachers and staff can really connect with those students. And that cohort, that group traveling together, taking classes together, just imagine how they'll bond with each other and then get support from each other. So it just really sounds great. It just sounds so exciting. Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Yeah. And thank you both.
My pleasure.
And to all of these folks. All right. Other questions? Well, thank you again. Thank you for coming. Thank you for all the great work you're doing. So, so exciting.
Thank you.
So our next item is the multilingual services. So we're going to hear another amazing report.
So you'll hear from Dr. Lindsay Rose, our Director for Multilingual Services. This is her second time presenting to the board and you're going to hear a little bit of some parallel things that we're trying to do here. And Dr. Rose is pretty much going to share where we are headed as a district regarding how we are supporting multilingual students. So, Dr. Rose, take it away.
Good evening.
I'm so glad to join you tonight. I'm Dr. Lindsay Rose. I'm Zara Shehania. And I'm the Director of Multilingual Services. I'm in my second year serving as Director and leading the work of our department. And I'm genuinely very excited to share with you how much we've accomplished in this short time and what lies ahead. So the goal of my time with you all tonight is to provide a brief summary of the comprehensive report that detailed our current student demographics, our enrollments, current and future program models, as well as an analysis of emergent multilingual learner data. And all of the efforts and information that I'll be reviewing with you has been aligned with our district's four priorities: equity, student well-being, literacy, and post-high school success. The Department of Multilingual Services was established in the 23, '24 school year to implement comprehensive and legislated emergent multilingual services. These services strive to remove obstacles to participation in the general education curriculum, increase long-term academic achievement, and elevate the needs of educators, families, and students invested in the shared success of our students. And it's really hard to believe that in only two years of having our department, we've been able to accomplish everything that we have. Our work has been deeply rooted in a spirit of collective efficacy. By working under the belief that our teamwork has a positive impact in the lives of students, we've been able to adapt longstanding practices, adopt new approaches, and make noticeable improvements for our linguistically diverse student body. The Department of Multilingual Services is unique from other academic departments in that our work is really in collaboration across all aspects of schooling. Our partnerships not only include working with each of the academic departments on instruction, but also in collaboration with enrollment, ensuring that each of any potential emergent multilingual student is identified with student services in course selection and graduation requirements, informational technology, in the rollout of talking points, our multilingual text messaging platform, with business services regarding grants and eligibilities, you name it. It has really been a team effort and I'm so grateful to our leadership team for their dedication to our continual improvement. So before we go any further, I think it's really important that we clarify the terminology that we're using tonight. And it can be a little tricky because we use special terminology here. We truly believe in an asset, assets-based lens for our students and so we live by that. Our words have a lot of power. We're going to use the terminology emergent multilingual student. And you may be familiar with the term English learner, English language learner, emergent bilingual. Those are terms used across state and federal levels. But here, we see our students as emerging in their linguistic proficiencies. And an emergent multilingual student is any student who qualifies for English learner services based on their performance on the access exam. More broadly, we use the term multilingual student to talk about any student who speaks another language. It's a very broad umbrella term. You can see we have over a quarter of our student body is multilingual. Some of these students were never identified as English learners or emergent multilinguals. Some were and then reached proficiency in English. And so it's a really wide term that just indicates students have exposure in their families, in their communities, and in their homes to another language. An identification of emergent multilingual student does not have any relationship to a student's immigration status, to their residency, or citizenship. Our EM students, as you'll see as we go into this report, are far from homogeneous. They vary greatly by country of origin, by language, literacy, schooling, race, socioeconomic status, you name it. And so we do not lump all of the students together under one definition, but we recognize that this is a very diverse group of students. And the enrollments are up. So emergent, the emergent multilingual student population has increased steadily, just like it has nationwide. And you'll see that we had an exponential increase where we doubled the number of emergent multilingual students over the course of three years. For the second year in a row, our EM student body has surpassed 10%. Over the last two years, we've enrolled more newcomers than the last four school years combined. With students joining us from across the globe, Afghanistan, Belize, Bangalore, Burundi, Colombia, Ethiopia, Haiti, India, Kazakhstan, Mexico, Mongolia, Pakistan, Peru, Sierra Leone, Syria, Togo, Turkey, Ukraine, El Salvador, Venezuela, those are just the countries from this year. In addition to welcoming newly arrived students, we can also attribute the increase in EM enrollment numbers due to our improved collaborations. The registrar's office and enterprise systems and our state reporting protocols have all improved in ensuring new students who are potential EMs are either screened for language proficiency or that their existing EM records are obtained and documented. And because of these efforts and this collective efficacy, to correctly identify and document EM students, coupled with improvements in how we administer the annual access exam, our emergent multilingual student group is now an accurate representation of both number of students and proficiency levels. What you see here is a year-to-year comparison of our emergent multilingual students by graduating We are seeing the number of EM students at each grade level more evenly distributed and we can anticipate that these numbers will continue to stabilize moving forward. The exponential growth that we saw over the past couple of years is not what we expect to see moving forward, rather a more even distribution of EM students across grade levels as you see in school year 2025. And our multilingual student body at ETHS represents over 80 distinct languages. That's our multilingual body. But among our emergent multilingual students, there are 45 languages spoken. You can see here, this is the emergent multilingual linguistic diversity, that the number one shared language of our emergent multilingual students is Spanish. And then we have Haitian Creole, French, Arabic, and Swahili as the most populous languages, with no other language group sharing more than four speakers across the remaining 40 languages. So our linguistic diversity is very broad. And when new students arrive with a language, their first question is, is there anyone else here who speaks my language? And oftentimes, the answer is no. So providing a system of support for these students is so essential to social emotional well-being and in determining how we make it all work. When there are 20 or more emergent multilingual students who share a common language, the state of Illinois requires native language instruction. So in addition to Spanish, this requirement is now in effect for Haitian Creole and French-speaking students. And this school year, through a grant opportunity we were awarded, we were able to initiate a French heritage class, a language that we already instructed, but we were able to redesign a section of the course in support of our Haitian and African French-speaking students. This is a way to maximize their connections to the curriculum and accelerate their language development skills in preparation for AP. So in addition to our broad and vast linguistic diversity, another demographic that we consider very closely in designing our EM programs is relative to previous schooling. About 15% of our EM student population is new to the country, which means they've lived in the US for less, three years or less. But the remaining 85% of EM students have been in US schools for much longer. Generally, EM students who have not reached English proficiency after six to seven years are labeled as long-term English learners by both state and federal definitions. Here at ETHS, 80% of our students who have been in EM services beyond six years are Spanish-speaking and/or receive special education services. So these are three very important student groups to consider: newcomers, Spanish-speaking emergent multilinguals, and dual-identified learners as we move forward in implementing service models. A service model that you're all probably familiar with and has been our longest-standing service model is the sheltered newcomer instruction program. So for our newcomer students with less than three years of, in the United States, we have a full-time program that integrates English language development and content instruction. We offer sheltered courses across all of the core graduation requirements: US history, civics, world history, algebra, you name it. And we currently have more than 65 students enrolled in two or more sheltered courses. Another vital feature of our newcomer program are the supports from a really great team of multilingual paraprofessionals. These paraprofessionals support our students in non-sheltered courses throughout their day and provide a really essential lifeline during a student's first days of school in the United States. But then what about services for our students who aren't new to the country, whose language needs aren't as visible or apparent as our newcomer students and who've been in US schools for more than six years and still identified as emergent multilingual? That term I use, long-term English learners. This is our largest EM student group and we used to refer to this group as long-term English learners or LTALs. But this terminology is a direct misrepresentation and misunderstanding of our students and we have to unlearn it, banish it from our vocabulary and not use it anymore. The LTAL label is one that posits a blame onto students, long-term English learner. Like what does that even mean? You've been doing it for too long? I don't know.
Yeah.
It makes no sense when you look closely at who our LTAL students, or as I like to refer to them, experienced multilingual students really are. 80% are Spanish-speaking students who've participated in dual-language, two-way immersion in District 65 since kindergarten and many since preschool. These experienced multilinguals have spent upwards of 50 to 90% of their school day learning content in Spanish, language arts, science, math, social studies. Given the investment in their literacy and academic skills in Spanish, it's not surprising that they enroll in ninth grade and are still developing academic language skills in English. And the reality is for these students, the transition here to ETHS can be described as linguistically abrupt. They're placed into courses based solely on their English reading and English math, MAPS scores. This criterion does not consider students' bilingual abilities nor their linguistic strengths. Instead, it characterizes students' literacy abilities through a monolingual lens. Everything their families and community invested so much in in elementary and middle school is rendered useless here. Spanish-speaking EM students represent less than 7% of our student population and account for over 50% of the students enrolled in freshman and sophomore reading classes. This reflects a systemic bias that limits students' opportunities and abilities to find success here at ETHS. By assessing our students' abilities through a more asset, assets-based lens, by recognizing the skills and abilities they possess, we can do much better at leveraging biliteracy and bilingualism as advantages and design better-suited programs and supports tailored to our students' actual needs. So currently, our experienced multilingual students can access support through two models. These are both brand-new models and we're in the process of rolling them up one grade level at a time. We have team-taught emergent multilingual English classes where students are intentionally grouped in freshman one humanities English and also in sophomore English classes to English. In these classes, an EM teacher team teaches to provide explicit and systemic English language development services and supports in the best possible environment, integrated with English proficient peers and receiving linguistic scaffolds. This year, we also began providing services in special education self-contained courses where an EM teacher pushes in and provides specific English language develop, English language development skills based on a student needs. Next year, we will be rolling up our services to junior-level English, so students who are currently sophomores and receiving support will be able to continue doing so in the coming school year. And these programs are great, but they don't leverage the assets that our students, our largest EM student group, bring with them. So hence the opportunity that we have before us to develop a dual-language program here at ETHS. This year, we assembled a representative team to form our first-ever dual-language steering committee and together- And together with leadership from ETHS, the World Languages Department, from District 65 Multilingual Services Departments, we began to explore what dual-language could look like here at the high school. We conducted a site visit to Highland Park High School. We took a team of teachers to La Cosecha, which is a national dual-language conference. And we obtained course approvals for an all-new Spanish Language Arts course sequence that will culminate with a dual-credit capstone course in partnership with Lake Forest College. While there's still a lot of work ahead for our team, we're very excited about the incredibly important foundational steps that we took to plant the seeds of a dual-language program here. I wanted to show an example of what a dual-language program could look like. And I love that I got to follow Teresa's great presentation, because this is just creating a school within a school that is specialized to our students' strengths and abilities and really designed to accelerate them. What you see here is a sample of how students would be on a trajectory of Spanish Language Arts that leads them to completion of two AP classes and a college-credit-bearing course, and then able to select from a myriad of content area courses and electives in Spanish. We have a lot of local flexibility on what that can look like. Program models vary across our region, and we can start to conceptualize it based on the staff that we have and the staff that we're hoping to hire. So developing a dual-language program and continuing to strengthen and expand our emergent multilingual supports have real, research-backed benefits. We know from research that dual-language students have higher college attendance rates than non-dual-language peers, that emergent multilinguals and well-implemented English language development programs and dual-language programs graduate at higher rates: 80% to 90% compared to ELs in English-only models: 60% to 70%. EMs with access to ESL and sheltered content courses are three times more likely to enroll in college. Schools with sustained EM supports across subject areas show higher outcomes on standardized tests. EMs who receive consistent language support throughout high school are more likely to pursue professional careers. And bilingual high school graduates earn 5% to 20% more over the course of their lifetime than monolingual peers. We know the benefits, and we know we have the potential with our student body. And they're proving it. One way we know we're on the right track is in looking at our ACCESS results. ACCESS is the annual exam of academic English across content areas that measures student language growth in speaking, listening, reading, and writing. This exam is a high-stakes test for emergent multilingual students. It's once a year, and it determines if they are English proficient or not. The number of students who reach an overall score of 4.8 or above will constitute a district's exit rate. And the exit rate is a sign if we're doing things right and kids are progressing and moving out or not. Student growth on the ACCESS exam is used also in another very important measure: our state summative designation. This is the only data point derived from the individual student level that impacts a school's overall summative rating. And prior to the establishment of our department, you can see that ETHS didn't have an exit rate above 1.5%. The pre-pandemic exit rate was consistently below 1%. But through the collective efficacy of our leadership team and the EM department, we get to celebrate historically high exit rates. And this year, we surpassed the state average. I think, and I've been trying to double-check this fact, y'all, but I think we have the highest exit rate of any high school in Illinois.
Wow.
And this is a reason to celebrate. We're all out there doing it. Every member of our leadership team takes a part in the proctoring of ACCESS. Taya brings donuts to students. We're all running around, running. But we've really created optimal conditions for student success. And we're communicating with our students what it means, why they're doing it, and why it matters. When a student exits an EM designation, they are eligible for the seal of biliteracy, which translates to money for post-high-school studies. They also skip requirements to take remedial coursework at the university and college level. There are so many opportunities that are awarded by exiting this designation. So it's a really important achievement, and our investment in ensuring our students can do it is paying off. So looking ahead, we can really hope to see continued and sustained collaboration to expand our programs and to provide services to emergent multilingual students, including the initiation of a dual-language program here at ETHS. We're going to continually monitor our EM student growth and achievement. We're going to seek to increase the number of bilingual Spanish-English proficient teachers across our departments and content areas. We're going to continue to strengthen our community engagement and partnerships. This year, we launched Talking Points, which is a multilingual text messaging platform. And we've already seen higher levels of engagement from our multilingual families as a result. We're also looking to continue offering and continuing to offer differentiated in-person events to support our linguistically diverse families in creating stronger connections with us here at the school. And as we look ahead, I really urge everyone here and everyone who serves our students to embrace a modern view of multilingualism. And as we do that, we're going to shift our focus away from merely learning English and acquiring English to really engaging a full linguistic repertoire, where each of our students get to use all of their linguistic resources across their language skills. We know that it will benefit their lifelong learning and their ability to stay connected to their communities and their futures. So thank you all, and I'm going to take any questions.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for that very uplifting report. And I also want to say that I appreciate the glossary that you have. I mean, you know, it's just, these terms
Yes.
change
Yes.
very quickly. And I thought I was up on them until, you know, I looked at this and realized that I'm not, really. So I just appreciate that. And the progress that you've made in the last, what, three years?
This is my second year as director and my third year at the school.
Wow. Amazing. Questions? Gretchen?
Not really questions. I just want to say thank you. I remember very well your presentation from last year, because it seemed really exciting that we even had a director. And I had never heard anything about any sort of multilingual student instruction in my entire 16 years on the school board. At least, that's what I remember thinking a year ago, and I think that's true, but my memory isn't the greatest. So I'm going to say two things. I didn't, after reading your report, I really didn't have any questions, not my area of expertise. The first thing I'm going to say is the slide at the very end where you show the success on the ACCESS test is like everything, not just to our students, but to a school board, which ought to be constantly looking for results like this. And, you know, we might get little bits and pieces. And we certainly have made progress in so many different things here. But sometimes, we don't even talk about our progress. We just get a lot of information about things we're doing, but we don't really hear about what it's leading to. And this is just a shining example of what a school board needs to hear, which is, all the things we're doing have actually resulted in something.
Absolutely.
So that's great news, and congratulations. I mean, I think you just deserve enormous kudos for that kind of a result. It's a good thing that the rest of your presentation was engaging enough to keep us with you right up until the end of the slide. Otherwise, I would have said you should have maybe opened with it. Although then, maybe our interest would have tapered off. I don't know. And then, just a really quick second comment. I have absolutely no education background other than, you know, my experience sitting here on the board. Several of my colleagues have experienced, serious experience, as in their life's work in the field of education. I do not. So when you reach that point in the middle of your presentation where you were talking about the language and the use of emergent or experienced multilingual students, I'm like, well, yeah, I mean, I thought that's always what it is, because I think you said similar things when you came a year ago. So I don't have to unlearn anything, because I had no, I had no information. So don't always assume that, you know, there are plenty of people like me that we will just take this on as the truth. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Liz?
Hello. So, yeah, thank you for this very detailed memorandum. I don't think I actually have any questions, because it was so informative. Thank you for your advocacy. And I just, you know, I just wanted to comment that I think, you know, I don't have a lived experience in multilingualism, but I distinctly remember growing up and watching my classmates and peers being forced into assimilation with a total erasure of their culture and language and the expectation that you would hide that at school, you wouldn't even tell anybody about it, and just how far we've come in really a short period of time. And I'm just thrilled to see this. Just the culturally responsiveness, just, you know, I don't know, it's just the asset-based language that you're shifting to. I just, I love all of it. And this is, I'm so impressed by everything that you're doing. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Pat?
Yeah, so more of the same. I know enough about multilingualistic education to be dangerous, so I don't know enough. Certainly not an expert, as you are, but I, just seeing the dynamic approach, and it is a huge shift. And in districts that I've worked in before who are trying to do this have not blown it out of the park like you have. So this is really, really impressive and really important. And if we didn't think it was important before, we certainly know it is now. Because we, you know, we really need to take the systemic approach that Dr. Campbell sort of led off yours and the previous presentation with. And I think this is, this is very exciting, because, again, going along with your, you know, the previous one, really looking at these issues holistically and dynamically and yet personalizing it to the student. Those things don't always go together. Some people think great systemically, but forget to look at the individual. And some people look at the individual and don't look at the systems. And I'm seeing both of that in what you've talked about, and it's just powerful. So thank you, and thank you, Dr. Campbell, for supporting your team to do this kind of work that looks at the individual and the whole and makes sure both are attended to. Because in the end, that's the best way to make change. So I'm just blown away. So thank you so much for your work.
Thank you. Appreciate that very much.
Mia?
So, some similar themes here. But I really like how your report this year and last year, it is, it's a really thorough, comprehensive report. So at the end of reading it carefully, it doesn't beg very many questions. But I think what's notable is that it's steeped in data and research, et cetera, but also steeped in our school's goals, priorities, and values. And that's really important, that those are all there together. So my, I just wanted to say that my background is in language. And I had my master's in education focused on second language learning back in the 90s. And I was a, I started out as a language teacher. And back then, I did a lot of, my focus, the conclusion was really how important dual-language program development is. So I think it's interesting. I mean, that thought has been around for a long time, and not just a thought, but the research to back it. So I'm glad that, I'm really glad to see we're putting that into action.
Absolutely.
And I definitely saw that there's that need for more bilingual Spanish-English teachers with EL certifications. Do we feel confident that, this might be a question also for our CFO, are we prepared to, that we think we can move in the direction of expanding our staff in that way?
Yeah, the plan is every year for the next, well, the last first two years and this year is to build the department. So that's the
Okay, so we're ready for that. Excellent.
And the other piece to consider, too, is when we have a vacancy, whether it be for, you know, a content area teacher, it's about prioritizing the hiring of folks who have the flexibility to serve across programs. So if we're going to hire, you know, a biology teacher, then we want to prioritize someone who would be able to, you know, provide support or offer the course in Spanish. And so it's not always adding additional staff, but it's being just very intentional in our hiring practices and ensuring we bring the right folks on.
Makes sense. I'll just add, I love that you said that, Dr. Rose, because that's where I've seen, other places that we hit a wall is when we don't have enough pathways or courses for our students to move through or within. So I have a lot of faith here, and I love that you raised that point.
And a lot of teacher-led programs are sort of moving that way.
Right.
Where I know that at Northwestern in their teacher preparation course sequence, almost every graduate that's leaving is leaving with this certification so that they can serve students like what we're trying to do here at ETH.
Yeah.
So a lot of teacher-led programs are moving in that direction.
Well, thank you again. Thank you.
Have one.
Oh, money, sorry.
Yeah, you know, I usually look at these meetings together. Like, it seems very strategic, Dr. Campbell, how you organize the presentations. So I never just look at one in isolation, which is why I wait, because I'm like, okay, there's a dot here that's about to be connected. What I appreciate about this is, not only this, but the presentation before as well, is the intentionality to see the invisible student that, you know, walk through the hallways, not connected to any other activity or not being able to communicate effectively, because maybe they're the only one and trying to find their space, their niche. And so just the intentionality of how you are creating literally a community in a community and making sure that every student is seen and heard. Yeah, I don't think I've experienced like what's being presented to us for as long as I've been on this board, where you are literally looking our students in their face and trying to figure out how do we help them be successful in the short time, very short time, that we have them. So I just want to applaud that. And I loved your presentation. I mean, just, I was just like, gosh, quality staff. Just listening to you present and, not just present, it was your passion. Like, this is what you breathe, right? It wasn't a presentation. You were actually just talking to us about what you love doing. And Teresa did the same thing. It was just like, this is the work, you know, and this is what we do. So I just want to highlight that. I don't have any questions. I just think it's so important to see what you're doing, Dr. to see what you're doing, Dr. Campbell.
I would agree. I'm just gonna add that this is a very special place to work, and the opportunity was here, and I don't think I've ever experienced a leadership team that is so willing to reconceptualize the potential of our students, and to really tailor programs at such a level. And so, you know, I feel so fortunate to be able to do this work and bring these types of results, but it's really because we have a team that believes in it, and, you know, is trusting, and says, if this is what's right for our students, then that's exactly what we have to do. And so, it's been incredibly encouraging, and, you know, feeds our energy every day. So, thanks to the team.
That is so important, even to hear those words, you know, in a time like this.
Absolutely.
It's really important to hear it. And certainly, your, as Monique said, your enthusiasm and your passion just came out, which is why it was so wonderful to listen to you and to see these results as a result of the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
So, thank you. All right, I don't want to miss anybody. Thank you again.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. All right. So, we are at the first reading of our press policy issue number 117. Is that correct? Yes.
That's right.
And we have a few.
So, yeah, this is Press 117, this is the first read.
Right.
Committee met on January 30th, we reviewed the policies in the packet. We have one of the policies out, checking with the attorney, 590 Abuse and Neglected Child Report, and we wanted to keep some of the original language therein, and we're checking with the attorney as to A, why did that language change, and B, can we keep it the way it is, because we felt it was more broadly applied. So, that's the question, and I'll have an update when we bring the final read forward.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. All right. Okay, the next item is the Lewis Sebring gift agreement.
Yes. Boy, we are excited to bring another gift to the Board for consideration for naming. And tonight, we have the privilege of recognizing yet another remarkable act of generosity that will help shape the future of Evanston Township High School. The Lewis Sebring Family Foundation has made a transformative $2.5 million gift to the ETHS Foundation in support of the district's five-year capital improvement program. This contribution, one of the largest in the foundation's history, demonstrates an extraordinary commitment to education, innovation, and the Evanston community. The Lewis Sebring Family Foundation has long been a champion for equity and opportunity in Evanston, investing in initiatives that expand access and open doors for young people. This latest gift will help ETHS enhance its facilities, infrastructure, and learning spaces, with a particular focus on expanding the school's arts and innovation wing. These improvements will create new possibilities for students to explore their creativity, develop their talents, and prepare for future careers. In recognition of this generosity, the planned gallery space adjacent to the auditorium will be named the Lewis Sebring Gallery. The space will serve, should you approve it, the space will serve as a dynamic hub for student expression, community engagement, and diverse exhibitions, a center for creativity and connection. Hope you appreciated the rendering and the memo this time. Since its founding, the Lewis Sebring Family Foundation has been a driving force for progress in Evanston, transforming lives and strengthening our community. The capital improvement program at ETHS is not just about spaces and structures, it's about opportunity. It's about creating pathways for our students to thrive, and future leaders to emerge from our halls. This generous contribution exemplifies the Lewis Sebring's family's commitments to Evanston, and helps build on ETHS's tradition as a leader in innovation and progress. On behalf of the district, to Chuck, and Penny, and Casey, want to extend our deepest gratitude for the Lewis Sebring Family Foundation for their unwavering commitment to ETHS, and to the ETHS Foundation for their timeless efforts in advancing our mission. This gift will have elastic impact on our students, ensuring that ETHS continues to be a place where young people are inspired to dream, create, and lead. To the Lewis Sebring Family, thank you for your generosity and belief in our potential of our students. Your legacy will be felt, we felt in every student who walks through the halls and the arts and innovation wing, and creates countless opportunities that this gift will create. Yeah, so thank you to the Lewis Sebring Family Foundation.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you, thank you.
I smiled, because there's a line in here about our capital program being about opportunity. It's not just the roofs and the windows, Kendra, it's about opportunities, okay?
That's for you.
We do need those roofs and windows. It's both ands.
It is definitely both.
You know, it won't, it won't snow in the school in the east wing, because we got new windows. How about that?
All right, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Campbell. All right, so, item number seven, FOIA's, we have four, correct?
We have six, because we have some doubles in there.
Oh, yeah, we do.
We have one from Belkin, one from Levin, two from Wang, and two from Milonowski, and the responses are in your packet.
Yep, they are. Okay, thank you. All right, item number eight, Board Committee Reports. Do we have any? Yes.
Well, I will just say that Superintendent Campbell and I attended a very nice EdRed legislative dinner at Stevenson High School. The food was almost as good as last year. But they, they put on a very nice spread at Stevenson, and there was an outstanding speaker, whose name I can't recall, but she is a lobbyist for the, for the National Superintendents Organization, whatever that's called. There you go, that. And honestly, I thought she was one of the best speakers EdRed has ever had, and I believe you can access her slideshow through the EdRed members-only site, so perhaps I should track that information down and share it with all of you, because you might find it interesting. She gave us a really nice legislative overview on where things stand from a national perspective, as of the time of the dinner. Things keep changing, but she was terrific.
Was that the January 27th meeting?
Something like that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, a couple, like, two weeks ago, maybe.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. But she was really engaging, very funny, and it was jam-packed with substance as well.
Awesome. Great. Love to look for that. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll send some.
Any others?
Yeah, mine is actually an EdRed thing as well. On Friday, they had the February monthly meeting, and they had a couple of attorneys come and speak about the executive orders and the potential for impact on K through 12 schools, and, you know, it was interesting, it's fairly high-level, but it was very interesting, had a little bit of encouragement. So, we can access that through the EdRed webpage, through the members, you know, members-only login. So, I would encourage people, if you're interested, to take a look.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. So, moving on, we have, we're at the Student Board Report. Rachel, yes, you are.
Okay, hi, everyone.
Hi.
So, recently, in the last month or so, social events have been really big at ETHS, like basketball games. Tomorrow, we have the new Trier one, which is exciting. People are falling into a good groove after winter break, and seniors are really excited to not be having, not have to take finals in the second semester. Okay, but now, back to like, business. So, recently, I've been working on a lot of the projects that I discussed in the last meeting, kind of in-depth. But like, in terms of student union, we presented our findings from the Student Voice Forum to the leadership team a few weeks ago, and we're currently working on solutions to address the identified issues in our smaller committees, which we've created, and we're planning to collaborate further with the leadership team as we develop these ideas. Then, last Monday, we had the anti-racist workshop, where around 50 students from different backgrounds all came together and participated in workshops that covered topics from unconscious bias to combating racism and systemic bias in the school. And it led to really thought-provoking discussions, supported students in the solidarity series, or through the solidarity series. And then, in terms of upcoming events, we have the solidarity space that I was working with Ms. Hamilton and a couple of the other equity-like leaders in the school with, which is on February 20th. So, I think for the next meeting, I'll have some more, some like, reflections about that. And then, the Black Student Summit is happening this week, and additional summits are coming up soon. But overall, the students seem to be really, like, highly engaged with the resources at ETHS that we've been providing, yeah, in the last few weeks. So, that's all.
Thank you. Thank you. Exciting. Okay, Dr. Campbell.
All right. So, the past few weeks have brought significant changes at the federal level, and we're closely monitoring any shifts in education policy that may impact our district. While it's too early to predict what the new administration's approach to the Department of Education will mean for ETHS and schools across the country, we will continue to assess the potential implications and plan accordingly. But I can say that those executive orders that have been issued and signed by the President require ETHS to be a school that we've never been, right?
Yes.
And we're gonna be the school that we know that we need to be, and that's a school that protects all of our kids, right? So, yeah. We recognize that these changes have understandably caused concern for members of our school community. Moments of uncertainty, especially when they involve policies that may directly affect students' rights, safety, sense of belonging, can be unsettling. So, please know that we are actively assessing these developments, and will provide updates as we learn more. I've released two statements in the last weeks, recent weeks, on the 20th and the 27th. They are available on the website, and I'd like to, again, reaffirm that ETHS were committed to our core values, and ETHS will not compromise on our vision to create safe, inclusive, and affirming environment for every student. And we will not allow our students' identities, experiences, and existence to be erased. Their rights and dignities and futures are not up for debate. We also know their belonging is fundamental to learning, and ETHS is proud to have some of the most dedicated educators and staff when it comes to including, inclusion and supporting students. That work will continue, no matter the shifting landscape. So while we navigate these changes, I also feel a tremendous sense of pride over how our broader community has come together during this time. Outreach and statements of support have been, have taken place across our campus, and I am proud of the way our students and staff have created spaces for dialogue and empowerment, fostering healing and belonging. Their efforts and the efforts of other students and staff members are powerful testament of our shared commitment to our values. I am proud to serve as superintendent of Evanston Township High School, and to lead this district in partnership with the Board of Ed, and this community, especially during this time. All right, it's very important. We remain steadfast in advancing policies and practices that promote equity, protect all students, and ensure that every young person in our school community has the opportunity and resources they need to achieve at their highest potential. That commitment does not change. So, that's my report.
Powerful. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Kim.
Thank you.
All right. Take a pause here.
All right.
Yeah. Said a lot. Okay, we are at item number 11, the Finance Committee, as the Board, the committee as a whole, and it's a little early, but.
That's okay.
It is.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Lovely to be with you this early in the evening. So, we're gonna take some time to go through our mid-year budget review. We'll do a mid-year analysis, and also just talk about budget concerns that have come up at this point in the year, and just what we expect to be happening for the remainder of this fiscal year. And so, we'll be going through fund by fund, and just starting off with the Education Fund. So here, you have a paragraph for revenues and expenditures. We see that our revenues are coming in at about 46%, and then expenditures also coming in at 46%. I don't think, since I've been doing this, that I've seen such a match like that for this fund in particular, so that was pretty interesting for me. But that 46% is really right in the area of what we would expect for our funds. Usually, it's somewhere between like, 45%, 55% variance, and so, we're on track so far. We are expecting that there's some revenue with evidence-based funding, that we hadn't had one of those payments in December, in our revenues for December, and so we know that once that comes in, then we'll be, you know, in an even better position there. So, we expect by the end of the year, that we'll be receiving all of the revenues that we anticipate, and that expenditures hopefully continue to remain on track as they have been. And of course, you all know, the Education Fund is the largest fund, and so this is always the one that we're paying the most attention to. And we've also been working with our department leaders, just in terms of making sure that we're monitoring expenses as well continually, and having discussions as we are now, if you can believe it, planning the budget for next year. That work is already happening right now, while we talk about where we at, where we were six months into the year, because all of this information is as of December 31st. Operations and Maintenance Fund here, so as I mentioned, you know, somewhere between 45% to 55% is what we'd expect to see, and that's what we're seeing here in the Operations and Maintenance Fund as well. 53% for expenditures, 48% for revenue. Going on to bond and interest. So, with the bond and interest fund, we see that we're at 76% for expenditures, but that is what happens for this particular fund, because we have our principal and interest payments for our bonds and debt certificates that happens in December, and so, we'll have another payment that happens in the spring, but that's just interest. So that's why the vast majority of the expenditures have happened for this fund, and why revenues aren't necessarily on track, but we know that by the end of the year, we'll receive those revenues as well, since we'll also have additional property taxes that are coming in right now. Transportation Fund. So, we see revenues at 44%, but our expenditures at 79%. So I did kind of allude to this when we spoke last month about the annual comprehensive financial report, and so we spoke about that, and we had a moment to also talk about the fund balance for the Transportation Fund. And so, we know that our fund balance is high in the Transportation Fund right now, but I was able to talk to the Board about why I wasn't recommending that we do a transfer of those funds, which is typically what we would do to stay within the fund, the fund balance range that's set by our Board policy. But I made the recommendation that we wouldn't do that transfer, recognizing that this year, we have seen a great uptick in our transportation expenses. We have a new transportation vendor that we're using for our special ed routes, and, you know, for, there were a couple of years where we were having some pretty significant service issues with the vendor that we had been using, and we knew that we needed to address that. It took some time, because competition right now, when it, everybody has a lot of work and not enough, not enough labor to go around, is the sense that was happening coming out of COVID, and so it was difficult initially to get a new vendor. We were able to find a new vendor, not having the service issues, but we are most certainly paying for it. And so, we're working with that vendor now for some mitigation efforts regarding the expenses, you know, making sure that we're looking at the routes, trying to identify ways that we may be able to route more efficiently, while not prolonging the experience for the student as far as like, the travel time too greatly, and seeing if we can just kind of fine-tune, fine-tune that a bit more. And then also, realizing what routes maybe it's more essential for them to do, rather, or where we can possibly. are where we can possibly bid out other routes for next year. And so we're, we're looking at a couple of different approaches to this to make sure, because obviously it would not be sustainable for us to have expenditures that are outpacing our revenues long-term, but this is something that we know we have the fund balance to do this right now, that, so we know that our expenditures are going to be higher than we initially anticipated, but that we're okay for this year and that we have some different efforts that we are putting into place to make sure that we're on a different path next year. I'm referring to social security fund, expenditures at 40%, revenues at 53%. TORT fund, so this is where we make a good deal of our insurance payments, 66% of the bulk of those payments happen in the beginning of the year, revenues are at 54%. And then the capital improvement fund, so the revenue in this fund is mainly due to donations secured through the ETHS Foundation. We were able to talk about the gift that we received, you know, even tonight, so when that, that happens, that's, that supports this fund, and this fund is then used to support capital projects. And so when we talk about the expenditures, you know, we had a couple of projects that happened in 2024, and so the expenditures that you see reported are really for the payments that happened in the beginning of this fiscal year during the summer and the closeout of those contracts. And then budget concerns, after talking through the different funds, we have some things that, you know, are always a concern for us, such as the tax caps that limit the amount of taxation. So, you know, where this comes into play is that, yeah, we see that there has been rising transportation costs that hasn't just affected us, that's affected schools all across the state. We've heard about it for years, and so we're feeling that now, but just because we see that costs have grown exponentially, we don't have the ability to say that we're going to levy at the same rate in which our expenses increase, right? Even though transportation costs have gone up so significantly, we still can only levy by what we're, by, by our cap, right? And so that's how PTEL works, that's what we have to adhere to, and so it is just a concern when you're trying to budget and take all of these different factors into consideration. Also, you know, Dr. Campbell just spoke about the, the changing landscape when it comes to the federal policies and the, the various stance, the stance and the threats that have come up in the last couple of weeks, and so we're keeping an eye on that because we know that there can be a financial impact when we consider that we have federal dollars that are, support our budget. And so when it comes to federal dollars, we have over $4 million of our budget that are federal funds, and so we have to really consider that and make sure that we're planning, right, for different scenarios and just making sure that we're keeping an eye on which way things are shifting and how that can impact us in the future. And so those are just all of the things that we're taking into consideration as we go through the rest of this fiscal year and also plan for the next fiscal year. Questions?
I think, well, I think you ended with what's on all of our minds, and I think we're, I mean, for me, I can say, speak for myself, this has really been on my mind a lot, and I really appreciate the position that our district is taking, really appreciate the position. And I just don't know, as I'm sure others, I don't know what's ahead. So I appreciate you as the CFO, keeping us informed and developing a few scenarios or options for us so that we can, I don't know, be as prepared as possible for what is going to come down. So. Pat?
Thanks. So as always, you've done an amazing job, and we tease you, but you really are so important. And to what Pat, to Pat's point, you were, you didn't know what you were ready for, but you were ready, and that's why we are so grateful to you and your team, that your leadership is about planning for the unknown, and we are in a time of unknown, and we always are, but right now it seems more tangible and yet unclear. And so you, you're ready for that, and so I think that the hard work that you've put in and the, the number of times you've come to the podium and previous, your predecessor came to the podium to accept awards and to submit 18 years of balanced budgets that, you know, were sound and manageable, and when crisis hit like it did with COVID, we handled it. We didn't go under. A lot of school districts around the country couldn't handle it, even with federal support. So I just, I can't, we can't thank you enough for the work that you always do, which is wonderful, but it's this kind of work, this being ready for what we don't know and still being able to stand to our values, as Marcus said. That's, that's unbelievable, and so we, I don't want to ever lose sight of that. So thank you and to all of the wonderful people that help you to do that. Thank you.
So as usual, thank you for presenting the numbers and being very clear to help us understand, and we do. And thank you to your team as well. Thank you, Kendra.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. Okay, the next item, I had words, items for action. The first item for action is approval of the Louis Sebring Gift Agreement. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Andy?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Conso?
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
Eater?
Yes.
Roamer?
Yes.
Sevenfold?
Yes. Okay, the next item is the Women's History Month Resolution, and Gretchen is going to read that for us.
Hello, good evening. So the, the information in your packet related to Women's History Month is sort of the background information for this year's recognition of Women's History Month, and what I'm going to read to you is, is a resolution that came from the National Women's History Alliance. So here goes. Whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, whereas American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force, working inside and outside of the home. Whereas American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation, including the school board. Whereas American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation. Whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. Whereas American women have served our country courageously in the military. Whereas American women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. And whereas despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history. Now therefore, be it resolved by the ETHS Board of Education that March is designated as Women's History Month.
Thank you. Can I have a motion for acceptance, please?
So moved, second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Gretchen. All right, so the consent agenda is the next item, and that includes approval of minutes from January 13th, 2025, both regular and closed session meeting, treasurer's report from November 2024, approval of bills, and the personnel report. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved, second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
Eater?
Yes.
Roamer?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, is there any old or new business? Anybody? Okay. Polling of the board, I think I just want to say, yeah, I've got just a quick, that I went to the jazz concert Saturday night, and it was amazing. It was really good. Rank it as one of the best. It was really good. Tia Fuller was the, is the saxophonist. She was really great. And then the Chicago State Jazz Band, it was just really good. It was a great, great evening. Pat, you have something?
Yeah, real quick, I, I didn't know that Dr. Campbell was going to make those beautiful remarks, but I just wanted to say that I am incredibly honored and proud to be part of ETHS, where we support every one of our students all the time, no matter what. I think our reports tonight were evidence of that, and the, the statements that Dr. Campbell made tonight, and also the, the statements that he sent out to the community as well. And just as a member of this board, I feel both honored and also deeply committed to supporting all the incredible people here at ETHS who are supporting our students because it's, it's tough times, and I just want our, our students to know that we are here for them, with them, and we'll do whatever, whatever it takes to be there for them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? All right, can we have a motion to adjourn?
I move, we adjourn.
Okay, we are adjourned at 9:19.
We're going to...